I am going to pass it over to Rob after he steps up the camera. He is going to take the lead.
Thanks. We have tonight with us our folks from the 720 in Oakwood Square to talk about next season, in particular, the endeavor to bring back, and I want to make sure I say this right, holiday markets at Oakwood Square. So with that, I will smartly turn it over to Lynn.
It's both guys who signed one of them.
Well, I knew who to turn it over to. Let's put it that way.
So hi, everybody. Good to see everybody again. You know, we have a very unique relationship, very unique partnership. And so we did the holiday market last year and the year before. And then we skipped a year and we had a holiday market. And each time we do this, we just get great, great feedback from us, from their side. And I'm hearing from you guys that you guys get the good feedback as well. And so we just want to do more of the good stuff. And so tonight, we just want to present with you, present to you what we're trying to do for next year, or at the end of this year. And we need to start the planning now. These things, there's a lot of moving parts to get these things to come together. And for us to get to where we want to go, you know, we really do need to start now. So with that, Lynn and Dave Shemko, the 720 Market Group, have a presentation to share with you as to what our vision is in conjunction with what you guys want to see. And we want to just kind of incorporate our both ideas together so we can have a great, great holiday this year.
Okay. Hi, everybody. This is just to get us in the mood a little bit more than the snow part. These are, these are German markets that we all have been inspired by.
Some of the free food. A bit of ice skating.
We can have Rob dress as well.
And so much more. This is the Christmas market in Cologne. So there's around about six or seven different Christmas markets in Cologne. I know it's crazy, and why bother the cathedral? We're going to start with this Christmas market, which has over a hundred stalls in it, and a mistletoe selfie wall, which sounds interesting. So go check it out. Now, this is probably one of the busiest markets in Cologne because it's right by the train station. So you'll get a lot of tourists around here. They get super busy at this time of day.
But in the show of the main features of that. These are unique but.
Little flutes.
Like uniform.
I mean, it's whistle or flutes. Whistles. They're whistles, aren't they?
We've got the German.
Can be a good festive panel. You might have been roofs. And the large Christmas tree that is in the middle. I don't know if you can see that, but it's just up there by the cathedral.
Next is, so that's German, and you know, we all love those.
Backcountry seven year old sale starts now. Grab the first dibs on sale here, up to sixty percent off. Then go get after it. Shemko will spin the new golf at backcountry.
Sorry, guys.
There you go. There you go.
Yeah, there we go. Okay. Atlanta is, Atlanta's the world. Very, very smart. Of course, Atlanta's a huge, a huge city. But there are elements of these markets that we know we could bring to Oakwood Square. But what we've shared with Lisa and Rob, what we suggested earlier, is it takes a partnership between people who put on markets, people on a platform, and then the.
Takes a village to put on a platform.
It takes a village.
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, that's a good one. Takes a village.
So just a little bit, I don't know if you want to call it. We're hoping for, you know, you already have your tree. We're hoping to have those sort of things, lots of lights that you've already had. We expect to add every year or something. But those are, those are, it's photo ops. But it's all the things that you already do in your laid up at Langacy book. But it's four weekends. That's what we're going to do. Four weekends. Skip to the next. Okay. What did, where did you look up here? Well, this is Pittsburgh, which we visited. And a very small, it's a smaller version, but what we love about this is it's so comparable to Oakwood Square, where they have all these vendors. It's a neat little Christmas village, but then around it, there's, there's restaurants and retail that you can go visit. So it's, it's just an integration of what we already do at Side Street Market. That is what my tree is there.
I love that tree. I know. How cute is that?
A sculpture that we hope to have at some point. And, and including artists and things like that from, from the Canton area. And lastly, it is Seattle. These sort of immersive light experiences. We're actually speaking with a local artist now, a lay artist, to see if we can do something that they can bring. And people are walking through legs and, you know, it's, it's just another added experience to the whole show. We like this because it's a little walk-through of it.
Yeah.
I can see them walking up in the theater, that little top place.
Something here, so. All right. So I think we're good there. And so we want to do this. So the, so the presentation that we put together was. As I shared with Rob and Lisa, I'm usually putting this together, not presenting them. So here we go. This is, this is just our info board, what we were inspired by. And a lot of those are the videos that you've already seen. But some versatile things, just, just a great holiday experience for the community. Then this is how we, what we presented to Visit Canton. We appreciate all that you guys did to support that grant. We were given thirty-eight thousand dollars toward purchasing fourteen sheds, fourteen Asian sheds. And that's all in, in the information. But we, we really believe, we, we were told time and time again that it was like a Hallmark experience coming to these events. And the European part of this, what we think will attract people from even out of Plank Township. We're going to market this as something like anywhere in Ohio, you're going to come visit. So four weekends is what we're going to do. We're going to promote it like we do our 720 markets. We're just really going to go after a lot of people coming here. It's the benefits for this is offseason programming for Plank Township and the theater. You know, instead of it sleeping for the, for the season, it's going to come alive even more. It's going to be an annual tradition is what we're hoping for. And we estimated six hundred and ninety thousand dollars would be the economic impact based on numbers for people visiting and what they're spending. So that's to our community. Just, just some strategic partnerships, which is what we keep saying over and over again in grants. Said at the beginning, it's also important that this is like, this is three entities that are coming together and forwarding out the detail. And then the establishments over at Oakwood Square, because we're going to really get them involved with this too. So we appreciate you guys can look that over, but it's just a little, it's the, the Oakwood Square partners put together letters for us that we presented with this grant ask. And it was just the impact that these things have on their business is huge. It's going to be a holiday market at Oakwood Square. And we, we decided, we had talked about the legislative shops, but we decided we'd stick with the market because we really want people to know you're shopping when you come here. And, you know, it's the holidays, so it should. And the 720, we really feel that we're going to get, we're going to draw from our 720 markets. The people that come to that, the people that come to Side Street Market, we're really, we think we can reach lots of parts of Ohio to come to this. Our footprint? This is, this is September for our Side Street Markets. And, and you know, I know you all know this. But do you want to talk a little bit about where the, where the sheds might be or where?
Yeah, I mean, the, down in the corner here, we have a, a kind of little mock-up with those little pink squares where we want to put the sheds over by the retention pond. Then over in the triangle area. And then like food trucks down the road will probably just close, just close one of that, I call it road, but that one area.
Passenger, the passenger area.
Could be the only area that would be closed off on Fridays and Saturdays. And then it would open back up on during the week. And then the sheds actually, you know, we're, we're buying, we're getting twenty-four this year. The plan is to expand next year and buy more.
On top of the five you have already.
Yeah. And I don't know if this is. Anyways, the. Yeah, see where the, where the purple tent is there? We're going to have the sheds wrapped around there. And then underneath the, the cantilever. Sheds that are there. The sheds that we have, the sheds that we already have in Spire that we have will actually fit underneath those if we need them to. Right now, I think we have, we'll have enough to do the bottom along to the left side. And I think we plan for the first, for this first year is to try to get set, tents set up to just kind of fill in where we can have like twenty-five to thirty vendors there. But that's the, that's the main plan right there.
Any questions about the brand at all? It's, it's very similar to the Side Street, but just with keeping, you know, every, every shed that we purchased was built to be, to fit into.
And underneath the sunshade, I think we have electric already there. There's a light for it. So it's good.
This is an image from last December that I have a legacy, a little teaser. Sample schedule is four, four weekends in November and December. And Friday and Saturdays is when we'll be open. Fridays, we're thinking four to eight, we have some times there, but it's, it's four to eight. And then Saturday's twelve to seven, open tented times. But that's, that's one of our, our window that we're looking at. Because we want to make sure that we catch people coming and going to the plaza. But, you know, early enough that people come out in the winter. And not too late in December that it's too cold and too, you know, no one wants to come out. Sample, those are example events that we withhold. We know it's important that not just, you know, it's not just people coming out to do some shopping, but we want to make sure that there's a lot of activities involved, making takes. And that's where we really want to get, we're going to get sponsors involved as well as we're going to ask our, our Oakwood partners to get involved with things like breakfast with Santa, which they do a lot of that already, but we want to make sure that we just, we get it in the next clean schedule so that things are happening at one time, you know, to, to encourage a lot of coming in the week. Any questions?
Should be based upon, based upon the timing and overlap. And Friday and Saturday nights are already the busiest nights of this plaza over, over here. If we have, let's say, each of the four weekends, you know, consistent traffic like we do at, to a light up. I mean, what are the businesses saying already? I know they, they don't like traffic, but I just know parking this past year, trying to get folks to park across the street has been a, has been a challenge. Because you'll get folks that will come in here and go, oh, yeah, we're, we're here, we're here to grab Y D. They never step foot, and some of the establishments will come right over for a concert. So, you know, and this should probably be a bigger, you know, this is more private grants area than is mine. But I've said from day one, before the amphitheater even went up over there, concerns of how, how this could have an adverse effect on the regulars in the establishments. Because if I'm a business, I'm planning on the regulars versus a one-time. If I try coming here consistently and I can't get in because of one timers, I'm probably not going to be back for a while. So I'm just curious what type of, you know, any initial feedback, concerns on that front? What's the?
So the good news is this, we learned a lot in 2023 on what it takes to, to do these with the four concerts that we did. That, that, that was a great test. And I thought, you know, it went off very, very smooth in general. We learned from each one of those what we need to do and where we need to place different people in different manner, no matter what things, from what I understand. The, the other piece of it is the parking component seems to be, we're always adding a little bit more parking and, and doing a little bit more. Now we have the, the sign, the electronic sign. People are going to be able to see, you know, park over there. There's going to probably just be a giant, you know, blinking thing that says parking with an arrow. But I, I think it's an education process, Scott. And I think throughout the summer, people are going to learn that that parking across the street is there available. And right now, I don't know if it's, has any, is that parking lot lit up at all across the street?
Short answers, short answers only when there's light, there are light to, light towers over there. Otherwise, the answer is no.
Okay.
Outside of roadside.
And I'm not speaking for Plank Township, obviously, but I'm assuming at some point a tent pole or a pole will get planted in the ground and some lights will get strung up for, for added lighting. And again, as a partnership, we would even want to help out in some things like that for just safety reasons for all parts of it. But to answer the, the, the underlying question, what about the regulars? I've talked to all the businesses so far, and right now, they are really excited about something like this. There's nothing else out there in Stark County doing what we're doing, putting, putting these kind of events right in the middle of commerce. And you see some of those videos that we saw, and again, the, the, granted, those were bigger cities. But people, I think, like to have a reason to come out in the middle of winter when it's this kind of cold temperature. No one wants to go out and build a village. Well, let's go outside and mingle with a hot cup of chocolate and a hot toddy or something. And let's bring little junior in that railroad train and race him up and down there. I, I thought that what you guys did last year was, or this past light up was fantastic with the events that you guys had. We just want to add more to it. But parking, Scott, is always something that we're mindful of and always trying to get better at.
So, I mean, trust me, there's nothing more than I enjoy sitting in any of the establishments back here. You know, grabbing a bite to eat and a drink, and you hear somebody complaining, I had to park over by Johnny Mart. I had to wait ten to fifteen minutes to get in. And typically, I love to kick back, be like, excuse me, are you from around here? And if you're not, there's a little bit of understanding because it's what you should have seen what was here six, seven years ago.
Yes.
Versus now, versus if, if you're from around here and you know what's going on. I don't have any sympathy for you because.
And I'm not sure who put that post out on Facebook of, it was a picture of Oakwood Square and it was empty. And the amount of. The amount of feedback and comments are, you know, remembering when the parking lot was Swiss cheese. It was funny listening to people go back in time. And I read every single one of those.
Yeah, that happened.
And I liked almost every single one of those.
Add it up in the alphabet.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, I would like to, I'll have you talk about this too if you want. But I, I think we, we feel that four weekends, you know, people aren't, it's not going to be like a man rush. Like it's only one event. It's like you're going to pick and choose when you can come. And I think Saturdays will likely be the, you know, the busy times because, you know, people are out and about shopping. But fun things to do while you're out dining is good for Friday, Friday nights. Comments? I love that.
This is a lot of great detail.
Yeah. Appreciate that. I just wanted to give you a little background on the sheds. They're, we call them sheds. They're, they're our little cups, whatever. But how they were purchased, we, the 720 and the 720 Art Initiative have purchased five, which you saw at the Little T's last year. And then One Eastern Company will, will be contributing to five more. And then we, the grant that we received to purchase fourteen. So that'll, that'll be our, our grouping this year. And like you said, aspire to add more. They come like that without the decorations. We need to add shelving and lights and decorations to each one of them. Inside and outside. Are yearly expenses for to go on an event like this, do you want to talk about?
I can't. These are just like basic, it's not like the whole thing here. But I just put some of those numbers in there just to kind of, just to kind of give you an idea of what everything's costing and what the revenue for the sheds were and what we're expecting to pay for entertainment. Again, these are just all budgets. You can't get the money. You know, just have to, I don't have to sing or something.
Oh, well, no. Definitely happens.
So that, you know, these are just like true budget numbers. I mean, you know, of what this is going to take to do this. Again, if, if anybody wants any more in doubt, look at this. I can get back to them.
That's actually a pretty good, that's a pretty good number when you look compared to the economic impact.
I know.
Number is a percentage, so.
Okay. Questions? So our partnerships, our partner sponsorships. The pie chart on the top left is going back to how we, how we were able to do something like this. The infrastructure and things that Grant put into, to like electric. I don't know if you want to speak to any of that or just if I just gloss over it.
We, we added electric into the amphitheater. And we're adding electric just outside of the amphitheater for these kind of events. So, so our investment is continuing into Oakwood Square and just making it better as these different things come, come down the pipe through.
Which is how we were able to obtain that grant is we had to show that we were putting just as much money into what they were doing. And that's how we, it was just like a perfectly timed thing to have happened. And we were just really grateful that we were able to do that. Same thing with entertainment, the, what we're putting into something like that. The 720 market applies for cultural tourism grants too. And we received a match of twenty-six hundred dollars to put toward advertising for this. And advertising, and that's entertainment, advertising is something separate, sorry about that. But that's where I'm talking about those lighting artists, you know, any sort of activity that we want to add. We have saved some matching dollars for that. And then we're going to look to, to Oakwood Square to provide programming for us and possibly Plank Township to help with those things too. Which takes me to the Plank Township sponsorships. We've asked to, and these are things that you've done with, for us all along, but simple things like putting a logo on, on your website, promoting it on the amphitheater website. And the new digital sign. We're excited about that. And add an article in the Plank Township newsletter. And I know you guys add these things to social media too, so. And, and Oakwood Square will be promoting it on, on social media. So we, we feel really good about that. Some of the additional things, which I have a handout for this too. Do you want me to do this now, Rob?
Yeah, I mean, yes, absolutely.
But the, the things like we are, we're wanting to have the, the partnering event for event days. Having a sheriff provided. And a shuttle is needed with, with Chief Schallberger's consultation and coordination with you if it's something that you see, like you want to help with. Open, parking open on event days. And, and this is all stuff that we'll assess as we see these events. You know, it may be something that we think, oh, they're trickling in. It's not, you know, we don't need a lot of parking, but we probably will at peak times. So, and then what we've also asked of Plank Township is to continue your laid up legacy, laid up at Legacy by Pat, just spread it out to the weekend. So instead of everything on a Friday night, we go into Saturday too. And we don't mean the level of, you know, all, all of your staff there, but something like, you know, adding, adding extra ice carvers or adding another, having a couple musical acts into Saturday. So that will help, you know, then instead of, you know, automatically then it's one weekend of entertainment that we, we, we don't program, but you do, and we support it. And we're working with Rob on that. He's helping connect us to different. The people that are already doing your, your things like the, the characters and things. Help with any acquisition of sponsors. If you know of anybody who's interested in this, we'd love to hear about it. You know, so we're going to be talking to them. Let's see what else. The community sponsorships, which we are, you know, we are actively going to be, we're, we're building those partnerships now, but we're going to be looking to the community to do things like, like do, you know, sponsor an activity or, or sponsor a warning station. Like get those little, you know, those propane heaters out, those sorts of things are laid in displays. So those are all the works. And any questions on that?
Yeah, this is very self-explanatory. I appreciate the detail.
And then the future growth, we, we aspire to see things like, you know, maybe having an outdoor movie or, or a really large base party event here that we can connect the Oakwood Square partners with. You know, expand on what you guys are, you may decide that you want to add more programming to the amphitheater during this time of year to really work with local artists. And, and we'll continue to work with, with Visit Canton to get our, our tourism grants. Yeah, so another thing to address, peak times, you know, we may decide, oh, maybe we should add a Sunday or maybe, you know, just, so this, this year is really, we're going to watch and see how people act, how they, how they come to it, and then we can make decisions for other years. We may be adding a whole other week or weekend, so we'll see.
For the sake, for the sake of funding and sponsorship streams, are you guys classified as a business or as a nonprofit?
I'm sorry, didn't catch that.
For the sake of funding purposes and pursuing, you know, whether it's sponsorships to grants through foundations, are you guys legally classified as a business or is it nonprofit?
We have, we are an LLC business, but we also have a nonprofit, which is the 720 Art Initiative. So when we have our events and we, and we, you know, sell our craft beer or have any sort of fundraiser that goes toward the art initiative, which we put back into things like entertainment, anything to enhance and elevate our events is what we, what we use that money for. Or, or hiring artists to do things like the, the wall out here by Ace Hardware. So we pay artists to do those things.
I lived in Germany for three years, and I can tell you those markets are every time. They're always good seeing everybody so happy to have a little bit of fresh air.
Yeah, it's very.
And shopping, yeah, something for the kids or something.
Right. So that's it for us. We, I included the Visit Canton quotes because they are very excited about this. They, because they know what we're doing for our other events. And, and we're bringing people from, you know, we're bringing people in from Columbus and Cleveland and Western PA to our events. And they're, they're coming to Stark County to spend their money and to see what Stark County has to offer. So only coming to Plank Township. And, and we already hear from people that come from Stowe and Akron area to come down. Youngstown from the side streets. So it's like, it's neat to, you know, they're seeing what's here.
And a lot of our vendors, you know, just like our last one, when we had one at Roadocks last weekend, over sixty percent of the vendors were from outer county. And so those people come here and see this area. And it's almost like the small business incubator where, you know, they see this area and they might want to move here, move into one of these buildings. You know, oh, I think even a few of our vendors have already contacted Grant. You know, they're just a small business trying to step up, try to get to the next brick and mortar store. So it is a little business incubator to him.
And we're, uh, uh, that we're super excited because we love working with all of you. We love working with Oakwood Square. You know, it's, it's just like the perfect place for something like this. It's, you've got the Congress and, and this great beautiful new facility, so.
And, and my goal is, I want to be here this time next year, just all of us together saying, how can we make the next holiday market even better? So, so that, that, that is the goal. And I think we're being, kind of just making the way a little bit by getting ahead of it now. So I appreciate you guys listening to us. I appreciate you guys listening to us and I would take any questions.
Questions you would want?
I'm gonna ask you this as well, yes.
Very detailed, I appreciate it, appreciate the time to do it.
Right, that works, I do too.
I think I'll be at it.
Sure, thank you. Grant, your electric feed, is it finished?
So we have a ran out to where you see it and then...
I see you got the electric.
We have, I'm in, this is the part of electric, I don't swim at night often, but I'm in the, the, what's the electric company again?
AEP?
AEP, is that AEP out here? Yeah, AEP and their guys are giving it energized. And then there's gonna be a final connection eventually when the concession stand gets built.
Okay.
And then it all will be energized with their meter. We're actually having, there's two hundred amp, you know, now, we're actually bringing another two hundred amp panel out there just because I think there's going to be, there's no gas ran out there. So things are gonna have to be heated in the wintertime. So a lot of investment just for the swearing time, but it's an investment that we're confident will pay us dividends down the road. But it's moving, it's just slow. We want everything to be done by the first concert. I know it's a stretch, but we'll try to get there and make sure it just goes off the top edge.
It was a stretch to get the amphitheater done by the first concert. She and I have talked about the shuttle, I think we just need to sit down with you guys and talk about when the peak hours are and we'll figure that out.
And we loved it and we would like to have a monthly meeting, kinda how we did when the amphitheater was built. It was great, we did it every two weeks. But right now, we would just like to touch base with you once a month as we get further along. One of the things that we're gonna do is, we've already started this, but I've got a designer coming out and he's laying out holiday themes for each one of the storefronts. He's given us like four or five options. So we go to John's Bar, this is how we want you to decorate it, we're gonna help you decorate it. You know, and just go down, so each one looks like a different shop. So it just doesn't look like a shop design, so try to break it off as best.
Nice.
I appreciate that, and I agree, we need to have at least monthly meetings of that for two weeks. Time goes so fast, it's gonna be...
We don't wanna get sick of it, yeah.
We need to get ahead of it. Well, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
You all put the rest of us to shame when we have to go back to the floor.
I know, Rob's gonna have to step up his game. I'd like to close this up, work session at five, fifty-three.